Recording in progress.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is now seven P M. I call to order our meeting for special council meeting for tonight, June eighth, twenty twenty five. For all of those that are able to, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to say December eighth, not June eighth. I s- I stood there, I realized that was my bad. So.
You were just starting again.
Exactly. So, uh, Ms. Hogan, you want to take roll call, please?
Councilmember Rounds.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Doughty.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Frymark.
Here.
Councilmember Houston.
Here.
Councilmember Friend.
Here.
All right, if I could ask everyone to turn their cell phones on silence, speak loud and proud into the microphones. It is now seven oh one, and we will go into public hearing, and this is for the ordinance fifteen eighty-two, twenty twenty-six budget public hearing. And this is for community members and council to ask questions. Dive into the budget. We've had a couple of public hearings. We had a public hearing last Monday. We also had our first reading. That was approved. Nothing has changed from week to week. Um, Ms. Rounds did ask a question I, for everyone's, um, awareness. They said, what if the LTAC dollars change or anything like that happened? How does that impact our budget? And our budget is approving this total spend of dollars, not the mix of dollars of who they get sent to. It's kind of a two-step process. So, um, the budget still, um, we are, we'll be authorizing and approving, um, that sixty thousand dollars that would be paid as part of LTAC. So, um, just want that for further discussion if anyone has it. So I will open it up to anyone online or in the community, or anyone on council that wants to have comments about the public hearing. Oh, Mr. Butler, come on up.
I just, I wanted to, uh, read in some correspondence. Um, so before, before I read our correspondence on the record, I just wanted to make one clarification. Um, the chamber did not request private legal representation or advice from the city attorney. Uh, our sim- our letter was simply asking that the city attorney address statutory compliance, uh, question so the council could make an informed decision uh, regarding the lawful use of restricted tourism funds.
And on that note, I don't think that I said that there was private, um, legal representation there. Um, I just want people to understand, I gave that letter to our attorney, um, not my, I'm not the lawyer in the room. Uh, and that was the representation that we received from our lawyer is, hey, we do not represent private organizations, entities, or individuals. We represent the city.
Yeah, and that was not our intent with the.
Yep, I just want to clear the record. I don't want someone to think that I took it as you guys were looking for private.
Yeah, all right. So I'm going to read the letter in.
Oh, hold on one second.
Question, is this about the budget specifically, or is this about action item C and D?
It's a, I mean, it affects the budget overall. So, because it's, it's a line item within the budget, so.
Okay, fire away.
Okay, uh, dear Mayor Dyar and council members, uh, the Woodland Chamber of Commerce submits this letter as a matter of public record regarding the recent actions of the, of the, I'm going to abbreviate, uh, the LTAC committee and the proposed allocations of the twenty-five, twenty-six.
Mr. Butler. Every time you're pounding on that, that's making the noise. I believe that's what it was.
I'm the one making the noise. Okay.
Everyone was looking at me, so.
Um, yeah. It's not.
Nope, I apologize. It's not. Everyone on.
I know, but it could be me, no.
Everyone up here just put theirs on you, and we'll see what happens. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, uh, the reconvened LTAC meeting, the committee voted to adopt the city's recommendation to divide fifty thousand dollars of LTAC funds equally between the chamber and downtown Woodland Revitalization, D W R, uh, with twenty-five thousand to each organization. This decision replaces LTAC's earlier recommendation of forty thousand dollars for the chamber for the visitor center operations and ten thousand for D W R, which had been supported by clear program that I've, uh, which had been supported by clear program definitions and auditable tourism outcomes. Unfortunately, this new allocation was approved without requiring D W R to amend its, its application or define how the altered amount from fifty thousand to ten thousand to twenty-five thousand will be used. Uh, D W R's existing proposal remains inconsistent with the purposes allowed under R C W sixty-seven point two eight point one eight one six, which limits the use of lodging tax revenue to tourism promotion or operations of a tourism-related facility. The current D W R application identifies activities such as local marketing, community events, and potential lease payments for a city-owned building uses that do not meet those definitions. Approving or dispersing funds under these circumstances could expose both the city and D W R to audit findings and repayment liability. The state auditor's office has repeatedly found that lodging tax funds may not be used for local general-purpose events that lack measurable overnight tourism impacts. Further, uh, transferring restricted, uh, tax funds through lease payments to the city's own property could be interpreted as an indirect subsidy to the general fund, raising questions under Article eight, section seven of the Washington State Constitution regarding gift of public funds. The chamber strongly urges the city and city attorney to obtain formal written legal clarification before approving any final allocations or dispersing funds. Specific questions regarding legal review are detailed in the attached appendix A. These include whether the revised allocation must be resum- resubmitted to LTAC for comment under R C W sixty-seven point two eight point one eight one seven two, and whether D W R must file an amended application consistent with its new funding level before the city can legally, legally authorize payment. Regarding the visitor center operational threshold, for the record, the chamber cannot continue to subsidize the Woodland Visitor Center at a financial loss. The full annual cost to operate the facility, including staffing, ish, uh, insurance, utilities, marketing, and state required tourism report, totals approximately eighty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, while the chamber can maintain operations with a forty thousand dollar LTAC allocation, that amount represents the absolute minimum required to keep the facility open. Any funding level below forty thousand, uh, will make continued operations financially unfeasible, and the city, uh, and the visitor center will close effective January first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, city council vote to allocate less than this amount would therefore constitute a deliberate decision by the council to discontinue maintaining and operating visitor center in Woodland. The responsibility, responsibility for that outcome with the, uh, the responsibility for that outcome therefore would rest with the city's funding determination, which places the financial burden of a public facility onto local businesses and other community funding, rather than sustaining it through its intended tourism revenue stream. This communication is made in good faith, uh, under the protection of R C W four point two four point one five oh, which provides immunity to individuals and organizations that communicate matters of public concern to a government agency. Uh, the, it does not constitute legal advice. It reflects, it reflects the chamber's over thirty years of experience, uh, thirty years of experience managing LTAC-funded tourism operations in compliance with state law and the state auditor's office guidelines. Our intent is, is really just to ensure that, um, all parties, the city, LTAC, D W R, and the chamber, proceed on legally sound, transparent, and defensible terms. Uh, we respectfully request that the city council, um, defer final action on LTAC, uh, allocations until the city attorney issues written findings on the questions pertaining, or contain in appendix A, and that any non-compliant applications be revised and resubmitted to LTAC for proper review. Uh, thank you for your time, attention, and commitment to lawful stewardship of public funds and to the continued success of tourism in Woodland. Respectfully submitted by the Woodland Chamber of Commerce. Just before, uh, before I go, I just wanted to offer one thought. People, people don't stop in a community because they're not, or because they're unable to search it for it online. People can Google Woodland, they can find all sorts of things, um, but that doesn't, it doesn't guarantee that we're not just a stop on I five, or that we're not just another city on I five to get gas. Uh, they stop because of place signals that is worth discovering. Uh, the visitor center is not just an office, it is Woodland's front door, it's an invitation, and in many cases, the reason a traveler chooses this exit instead of Calama, Castle Rock, or any of the others that, that have a commitment to that. And if the visitor center closes, the question becomes not whether travelers can find Woodland online, uh, but whether Woodland believes in itself enough to welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do things here. You don't have to go back. You can start it down along, sorry, come on. You and I know each other. Um, so a couple of things here. So when we talk about the various items there, uh, with legal representation as far as reviewing their application and whether we have them. So we have had our legal representation part of these discussions. They have been part of our council meetings. They have been part of this whole review process. Nowhere have they given us rise to concern or told us, hey, you can't do this, you can't do that. They have been part of this whole process there. So, I'm very comfortable with the movement of how this has gone through, knowing that the lawyers are part of this discussion, our lawyers are on that piece there. On the, uh, fifty thousand dollars here, so part of our budget is authorizing between the two organizations, whether it's fifty thousand for one, zero, four, hundred, or five. We are, as a council, I should, they are, as a council, are authorizing fifty thousand dollars to be, you know, spent in total there. So with the, as far as the budget's concerned, that is what we're looking here and saying, hey, total LTAC, are you comfortable with it being sixty thousand dollars? How it gets divided up, that is a separate action. I guess I would ask here then, when I hear that it's not viable with less than forty thousand dollars, we've not seen anything officially come from the chamber. Um, I, you know, I saw an article in the newspaper, and I, you know, had different rumblings. Again, that's all rumored, so that's why I'm asking you, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Neil, again, so if you're not.
That's fine, yeah.
So, if you don't get forty thousand dollars, will you not be taking the twenty-five thousand dollars at all?
No, we would not be.
You would not be.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, we wouldn't be able to operate the visitor center with the twenty-five.
And again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just.
No, 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 I understand.
I want to make sure that, you know, the, the whole conversation is happening.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Do you have a say?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, that is, that is, that's correct.
Okay.
So, okay.
Any, council, any questions for Neil here, Mr. Butler, not related to Donald? Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
What is the, uh, what is the cost for the employee, what's that cost for the employee there for the year?
Uh, it's, it's in the application back in, I don't know.
The total spend is eighty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's with everything.
That, yeah, that covers everything. The application itself breaks down.
And they do other fundraising activities and different things that help also.
Has the chamber had anyone look, uh, an attorney look at this?
We have had, yes.
Okay, and what conclusion did they come to?
Um, so it's, it's only our legal counsel, it's not anybody else's, it's just for us. Uh, the, the conclusions that we came to with the questions that we asked would be that, um, twofold either that, you know, whatever, whatever you guys decide, if, if, um, D W R takes the money, that they should resubmit an application, uh, because at this point, their application doesn't represent the money that they're going to spend, it doesn't clarify what they're doing with it, which can constitute an issue. And also, that, I mean, that, that, actually, that's just, I don't know how to finish that sentence, period, yeah.
And again, I don't want to tell you how to answer it.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah, and we talked, that, that was our direction.
I think Mr. Burke has a question. Oh. Oh, yes, you can turn it back on. We still have the rattle, and I apologize on that. So, for anyone online, anyone in the room, Ms. Rounds' question, um, to Mr. Butler was asking if the chamber had seeked legal representation, was the question.
I had my microphone on when I asked the question, so.
My bad.
Then I turned it back off. I had it on.
Okay. Any, oh, Mr. Hall.
Is there, excuse me, is there any reason why we wouldn't, um, ask for some input on this from the municipal, uh, research and services center? Um, they, they normally handle these kind of things, and they would, they would respond. And it's a service that's available to us, so I'm wondering why we wouldn't get that input before we proceed.
I, I guess I'm not a hundred percent tracking here. Use the, um, municipal, uh, legal representation. I, 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 I'm not trying to.
He's referring to the M R S C, the one that gives guidance to municipalities on questions of LTAC funding and dispersal, dispersment.
Again, I, we, I'm not against it, we can, we're using our, uh, in-house or, you know, outside legal counsel, but I'm not against that, Mr. Hall, at all.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's a, it's a resource we could use, and maybe we'll get, uh, some, some better input, and it sounds like we have a difference in opinions from two different attorneys, so why wouldn't we go to a resource where we could get some, uh, counsel on it and, and add to the discussion so that we know if we're, if we're, if we're, if they will come back and bite us as a finding.
Well, if our attorney says it's, we were doing nothing wrong, why keep revisiting with somebody else like that saying we don't trust our attorney? And to tell us what you think is right, so we should take the advice of our attorney if that's who, you know, represents us.
Just, uh, question, so you, you mentioned earlier that the use that, uh, D W R wanted to use the funds for was not appropriate based on the requirements. And I recall a conversation kind of throughout this, um, that maybe the way that the funds were being administered previously was not appropriate. That what should be happening is we should be getting a request after expenditure to review that and then determine its appropriateness and then issue reimbursement for it. So would that not give us an opportunity to review those expenses at the time they're submitted to determine if they align with the appropriate use for the LTAC funds?
So, um, currently, and I'm not picking on anyone, we're just having a candid conversation, those have not, that's not how it's been handled with the chamber. But yes, that is how it's going forward, and, um, D W R, chamber, they all know, hey, we need reimbursement first. Uh, or we need receipts, we need spend receipts, and then legitimacy. Ms. Hogan, you were going to say something.
Uh, to just answer Councilmember Friend's question is technically, I did look back in historical files regarding LTAC, and we are audited on LTAC. Every year, they ask for contracts, what's spent and whatnot, and not a single time have they ever raised a question about findings of any sorts, um, because it's a similar situation to the Lilac Garden as well. They, far as receipts goes, we're required to see what those expenditures are so that we have a checklist, yep, it meets this, no, it doesn't meet any of these items.
So, so then, uh, so we would have an opportunity to say this is appropriate or inappropriate.
Yes, there is a check, yes, and the. Correct, and the applications themselves don't have to be adjusted, they're just applications, so they're telling us what they're wanting to spend the money on, and if they don't request the full, they don't receive the full request, they only get partial. Um, it's still allowable, because we'll still, it still falls in what they're saying they're going to be spending it on.
And to clarify, what was the original ask from each group? Was it fifty and fifty?
Fifty and fifty.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Farmer, my bad.
Appreciate your presentation. I have a strong tendency to agree, to agree with our ability or inability to survive an audit, uh, funds being used for that. You know, I'm not a lawyer, but what my experience has been in the past is that's pretty well defined, defined on the, on the state level, and I'd be real careful about that. I have a stronger concern about our chamber. I've been in a lot of chambers before, and without a good chamber, business in the town is generally significantly off. Uh, I don't want our town to fail because we don't have a good chamber of commerce. I respect that D W R's efforts, and, you know, I applaud them, but if we can't maintain a chamber of commerce that's open to the public and answer their questions on a real-time basis, and look like we're open, and like the city is open, and nothing keeps means like the city is open like a, a, a chamber of commerce, I would support that first and foremost on it.
So, I want to go back, I want to be clear. This public hearing is about our budget.
Yeah.
And our budget is saying that we are going to spend sixty thousand dollars on LTAC. Again, we're now having conversations again, and again, I'm not saying we need to go this way, or that way, or that way. We have those other items, I mean, our public hearing is about our budget, and so.
Is it okay if I?
It's absolutely.
Okay, all right.
But I just want to make sure that we're, the conversation here is not whether we give money here, or we give money here, or what you do with your money. The conversation is, are we pleased, and are we going to approve a budget that says with L TAC dollars, we're going to spend sixty thousand dollars, regardless of who it goes to, so.
Okay. Oh, okay, oh, I want that, I, I mean, really, it just comes down to the two questions. Does, does this, does the city believe that we should have a chamber, or, and, no, I'm sorry, sorry. Uh, the, sure, the answer to that. Now, the question comes down to, the visitor center is not the chamber, and the chamber is not the visitor center. Uh, regardless of the continued operation of the visitor center, the chamber still exists and still operates and does all the things that it does. So the question really comes down to, does the, does the council believe that a visitor center brings value, does, you know, whatever it is, all the things that we've talked about, and what's addressed in the packet, and then do they want the Chamber of Commerce to continue to operate that visitor center? And then our stance is just that, that forty thousand dollars, um, is what we're requesting to be able to operate that. Received contributions from Calitz County and Clark County, um, and from, uh, individual fundraisers and things like that, but ultimately, this is the, this is the visitor center that represents Woodland, and we're asking Woodland to support their visitor center. So with that, I, I don't have anything else to say, but awesome, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I, let me finish that, but I was going to try before here.
Yes, it is.
One sentence.
Uh, my point being is that without a good visitor center, we're not going to see the issue of visitors. It's the window into the city, it's the public front. You can't hear me?
There's your, yeah.
Okay.
It's up, it's on.
Okay, the visitor center is the public front for the Chamber of Commerce, and I really believe in Chamber of Commerce as that means to me. We have to have a big window into it, and that would be the visitor center first and foremost.
So, any other questions or comments about our spend, our budget? I think I have Mr. Hall down here who is raising his hand first.
Yeah, um, I think we should talk also about our new building. The one we, we've been referring to it as the Civic Center. Um, I don't know where that name came from or when we got started using it, as I, as far as I can see, it's not the center of anything, nothing's happening.
Yeah.
The, uh, building was completed months ago, it still sits empty.
And people can rent it out, just like any other, other buildings and facilities. It's, um, out there, we have a part of a fee schedule. It is, you know, rentable, usable, um, how community members want. The name Civic Center came along. That was something from the prior administration that is just carried forward here, um, and it's that Civic Center. So, I don't have the history to know, that's something that, you know, I inherited that name, and away we go.
Yeah. Anyway, on the building, um, my concern is that back when that building was, um, planned and budgeted and all the details were worked out to get it going, um, at that time, it was going to be a welcome center, not a civic center, it was going to be a welcome center, and it was going to house the visitors' uh, center that the chamber now runs. They were going to scrape that old wobbly box off the north side of that street, get rid of it, and they were going to occupy that space, which would keep the doors of that building open a good share of the time. And then it would function as the trail piece, uh, that, uh, the Muckaycom Calitz County Council of Governments wanted it to be, wanted to be a part of that trail. My concern is this, um, we used money from lodging tax to go into that building.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars, so there's the exact penny for penny of the lumber package to buy that. And that has been discussed in a prior audit, prior administration. I can't fix what has been done wrong.
I'm not asking that. I, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, because we have, we have, we have brought that discussion up about the twenty-eight thousand dollars numerous times, and it keeps going back to the same thing, because I was very adamant, and had a discussion, I'm looking at Amanda here, because she deals with the auditors, because I wanted them to be aware, whoo, here is an invoice for the exact twenty-eight thousand dollars, whoo, for the exact amount that would collect a dollar for dollar. I mean, and, and Mr. Hall, when we talk about that visitor center, I mean, welcoming center, civic center, whatever we want to call that white building there, yes, the prior administration, there was an understanding that we're going to be a dollar, okay? I met with the chamber, I struggled, that our community members, where we have thirty, forty percent of our, uh, citizens who can't pay their water bills on time, are going to pay property taxes and give a bill for a dollar a year. So I had discussions with them, they had it as ideas, and did Mr. Butler leave?
He did, indeed.
Okay, um, had discussions with them, and we talked about anywhere from five hundred dollars, and then we brought it, came here forward, and we talked about it being a thousand, and how do we recover the water, the sewer, the electricity, the cable, and just make it so that we, as a city, are whole? Again, I mean, I, I mean, I, I welcome, I mean, we've had these conversations, this has been here previously. The contract was given to them, there was discussion, and I never heard anything back from the chamber as far as wanting to spend that money, okay? That's where that sits, and I mean, I just, I just feel like we just keep going back and beating a dead horse on this one here.
I'm, I'm not done.
Okay, continue on.
And don't interrupt again. I'm an old man. I forget where I am, and I will lose my place, and I will start over and go back through it, so.
I apologize, I didn't know you were interrupting, it must have been a pregnant pause, I thought you were done, and so I was just having a conversation, but continue on, my apologies.
So anyway, we used LTAC money to go into that building. Then we got LTAC money from the county that went into that building. All of it was intended to make that building a welcome center, keep the doors open, it wasn't to sit there idle with nothing going on. And the, the contract for a dollar a month, or a dollar a year, whatever it was, included the fact that they would take care of the heat and lights. Well, that's right now falling on the people of Woodland to pay that bill. So here sits an empty building, the chamber just told us in three weeks, we got another empty building. So we got two empty buildings sitting in Long Gorg, and we're not, and we have no visitor center. My position is, why don't we go back to that agreement and get the, um, chamber in there with their visitor center and allow them to function there? We can have the, uh, the downtown Woodland Revitalization people in there as well. There's a, there's even room for the, the booster club of Woodland to set up things in there. We, we could have a functioning building instead of an empty idle one, and it could be serving a purpose that benefits the chamber and the city, and helps our business community, instead of, right now, I feel like we have created animosity between us and the Chamber of Commerce over this issue. And it, it's all because we've departed from the original intent of the building. We departed from the idea that it would serve the community and act as a, as a welcome center. And I feel like that is a violation of trust with the community, with the county, with our LTAC funds. I, I just feel like we have, um, misappropriated those, those funds. So, with that in mind, I think there's another solution here that could benefit everybody, and I just don't, I guess I'm not comfortable approving a budget that says we're just going to let it sit empty and let the people pay for it. I, I don't think that's the right answer, and I, I'm, I'm, enough I'm comfortable about it, I, after last meeting, and you told me that you'd gone and talked to the state auditors, that tells me that you knew we were potentially in violation, and I think that that's a problem. And I think we have not only a problem of, uh, communication with our chamber and our community, but I think we have a problem of integrity at the city level in the use of that facility. So, those are my issues, and those are the reasons I'm very reluctant to go ahead with this budget.
Are you done?
I'm done. I'm done.
So, I have a few things I will say. It was ten thousand dollars from Calitz, two empty buildings, the city only owns one, that trailer, it doesn't make any difference, that is not city property. What happens with that is not city responsibility. When you talk about the twenty-eight thousand dollars, the prior administration jacked over our city. They screwed, pardon my French, they screwed over our city and spent funds inappropriately, and I worked with the state, the state auditors on that. So, yeah, I did, was concerned. As an individual from our community that sat out there and seen twenty-eight thousand dollars and DWR and being the chamber, having their applications withheld and pulled the night of those meetings? And then, seeing twenty-eight thousand dollars, when I came in as mayor, absolutely, I was concerned, and so, you know what? That's the reason I went there. And we talk about integrity, look at how our city has voted. Our city, if we wanna sit there and say, okay, well, we should let them go back for a penny, we have new council members that are coming in on January, let our new council members, that is this direction our city has gone. Our city has said, these are elected officials that we want, let them do it. Here, we are deciding on a budget, whether that building sits there vacant, or whether that building gets rented for a dollar, or gets rented for three hundred and fifty. We have built those expenses into this budget here. That is the discussion that I look at our seven council members are here for, is to say, do we want this budget and are we comfortable spending our dollars there? If you all want to go and have a dollar contract with the chamber, let the new council members who are coming in. That is not something at the last minute, at the December where we say, whoop, here, this is what we want. So, when you talk about integrity, that's where my integrity stands. Now, I have other questions from Mr. Houston, and then I will go to Ms. Dowell.
Well, my thing was, is talking about the money, but what is it in the process, one, two million, would be well done?
Little over a million dollars.
They said it was six hundred thousand to build the whole thing?
The six hundred thousand dollars was for them to use hammer and nails. We were required to pay for, uh, the interior, we were required to pay for, just like the building package, the twenty-eight thousand dollars, we paid for that. The Koff family did quite a bit of work for us and donated, that cedar ceiling, they paid for that. We did things to make things less expensive by doing just a plain cement painted floor. Did we do things in there to make it slightly more expensive? Absolutely, we put five thousand dollars worth of appliances in there, and I will stand by that to this day. Why do people rent the old community center? They can put things in the oven, they can say, whoo, come to my, you know, birthday party or whatever, so.
I think they won't spend it, you know, the way it's been.
Correct, so I just, I don't want people to say, oh, wait, what did he, so, you know, I'm open about that.
I think we were misled with the previous administration, oh, boy, it's actually gonna cost to have a completed building, so we got started with the remainder of finishing it.
Ms. Dowell.
Okay, so, my first question is, you say sixty thousand, but it's actually sixty-five, correct? Okay, my next question is not really a question, it's a statement. I have a lot to say about what, um, Mr. Hall said, but I don't believe it's part of our, um, budget. I'd like to save it for the actual visitor's center comments.
This is actual public period, yep, so anything related to our budget for twenty-twenty-six, you're more than welcome, come to the mic and speak, sir. Yep?
Hi, city councillors, my name is Max Bondur, fellow citizen here, uh, two zero three Tagal Court. I wasn't really planning on speaking today, but, um, this is a really, really good conversation, and I just wanted to bring in, like, a citizen perspective. Our family moved here about two and a half years ago to this town, um, and we really appreciate all the progress that was made with the new library and the Civic Center, I believe. The one quite, the biggest thing that we always wondered was what was the trailer, um, in that parking lot that's blocking the beautiful, you know, new buildings? And we went into it once, right, and we found out, oh, well, th- this was probably about a year after living here, and we're like, whoa, this is some sort of visitor's center. We went into it, and it was kind of nice and homey, but, you know, it kinda had this feeling of like, okay, it's, yeah, we looked at it, not very impressed, right? And so, I don't know if this kinda relates to maybe what Mr. Hall said, but I kept wondering what this new building is gonna be, like, this, uh, this white civic center? And it's like, this would be perfect if the visitor's center was combined with this white building, and so, when we're talking about budget here, and the gentleman that left said, um, you know, without this money, without this forty thousand, this, you know, the trailer can't operate. And so, in my mind, you know, there's a part of me that's, you know, I don't wanna come out the wrong way, that says, hooray, right? Because, because I kinda want the trailer to be gone, and, and, you know, and maybe, like, so, and maybe that's part of the Woodland revitalization, right? Like, kind of out with the old and with the new, like, let's bring some new life to the city. So, I, I kind of agree, there's a lot of new families, kind of newer homes being built, newer communities moving in, and this is kind of front and facing. So, frankly, you know, there's this split between twenty-five and twenty-five, frankly, I'm, I would just say, my personal perspective on the situation, I'm more fifty thousand go towards the revitalization. Zero goes towards the trailer, and like I said, out with the old and with the new, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Motion to end public hearing.
Second, second, okay? It is a discussion. Ms. Hogan? Okay, perfect. So, the time is now seven thirty-five, we will leave public hearing, and we will move into agenda.
Motion to approve agenda with the movement of the visitor's center ahead of the downtown Woodland revitalization.
So, I have a first to move item, action item D to action item C, and action item C to action item D.
Yes.
I have a second from Mr. Frymark.
Second.
I already have a second, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Hogan, do you wanna take a vote?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston? Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Okay, so we have an approved agenda with action item B, then we'll go to action item D, and then we will go to action item C. All right? Moving into action items, action item B, ordinance fifteen eighty-two, adoption of twenty-twenty-six budget, second and final reading.
Motion to approve ordinance number fifteen eighty-two, adoption of the twenty-twenty-six budget.
Second.
I have a first from Ms. Doughty, and I have a second from Mr. Houston over here, was that you, or Mr. Friend? Any conversation from anyone in the community regarding the budget or anyone on council, discussion regarding the budget for twenty-twenty-six? Hearing none, Ms. Hogan.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston? Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Okay. Moving into action item D, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Woodland Chamber for the Woodland Visitor Center to receive twenty-five thousand dollars from lod- lodging tax funding. Hearing no motion.
I'm motion to discuss a little bit.
I have a second.
I have a motion to discuss, but a, not an action item to approve. So, discussion here, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Doughty, and then we'll go to Mr. Friend, my, my apologies.
So, regarding some of the things Mr. Hall said, um, first and foremost, I think that my biggest heartache with this group wanting the money and saying that they can only have forty thousand is that, first, they were one, unwilling to work with the city, even last year, when we talked about them moving to the new building. Second, when we knew, two groups came in front of us with fifty thousand dollar things, we said, work together. I know DWR reached out to them, and they never reached back, and to have a discussion on how they can both use the funds to have a nice visitor's center and a DWR together. So, in my opinion, especially after he sat here and said, without forty thousand, it's like telling us that, hey, we're gonna shut down if you don't give us what we want. And I don't think we should be felt to have our hands tied and have to give it to them for them to operate. In my opinion, I don't believe they deserve the money at this point, when they're unwilling at three different points to work in any regard with that. So, in my opinion, I would says, shift all the money to DWR.
Mr. Friend?
I feel like the chambers made it clear that they won't accept twenty-five thousand, because we, that question was asked earlier and answered. It's interesting that both groups ask for fifty, DWR seems willing to make it work with half of the funds. Um, it does leave the question for the other half of the funds, if this were approved at twenty-five, which we now know they won't accept. Um, we know that DWR will accept the twenty-five and do what they can with that, and I've heard talk that they're willing to step up and potentially operate a welcome center in the space. Could that later be altered to award them fifty if there's a rejection of the twenty-five, or is it set in stone once we authorize twenty-five?
So, the budget is authorizing fifty thousand dollars in total. So, later on, we can make a motion, and it could come back to council for that discussion.
To give them additional funds.
Correct.
Okay.
That twenty-five thousand will be into the budget to spend. Were you done?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good.
I, again, council makes the decision, I work with our staff to implement, something to think about and some thought here. I know DWR has done good work, I know that the chamber does good work. I struggle to turn around and, because Mr. Butler stood here and said, no, we aren't going to accept it, for us to say, fine, then we're just gonna pull the money here tonight. I think that we've made a decision, we, you all, you know, it was voted on previously to give them the twenty-five thousand. I think, you know, when you talk about to honor and to simply, you know, to fulfill that commitment that was there, hey, that's twenty-five thousand dollars. I think it's very disingenuous, well, okay, then we're gonna pull our twenty-five thousand dollar funding. Um, again, I would like to see everybody be able to work together and still make progress in, you know, how do we move our community forward? We're all in this together, there's sixty-five hundred residents here, we have sixty-five hundred different opinions. Um, to think that there's seven plus me is eight here, let's just call it thirty in the room, and to think that, hey, this is, you know, the decision, and this is how our city is going to operate based off a room of fifty here? Again, it's a soapbox, but I just, I think that, yes, you all made a decision, LTAC committee made a decision. I struggle, sitting here today on a budget where we said we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars, and now having a council say, oh, sorry, we're not giving you your money now.
Yeah, and I, I think I'm in agreement, and that's why I asked the question, um, if they choose not to accept it. But we did push this back to LTAC and said, twenty-five, twenty-five is what we voted and recommended, and I think, moving forward and keeping to our word, that that's what we agreed on. Now, if the chamber chooses not to accept that because it's not sufficient for their operations, and then I think that's a future decision to decide, how do we disperse the remaining money? But I think it's important to keep to, I mean, we asked LTAC to make it that way, and that's where we're at.
And they would require to turn their receipts in, so it's not like January first, we would write them a check for twenty-five thousand.
And I think that gives me peace of mind with the other conversation about concerns, we can review those expenses to make sure they're in alignment, and, and I don't think it hurts to have Emily potentially weigh in on a couple of them, to make sure that we're in alignment with the rules pertaining to those funds.
Any comments from anyone in the community, anyone else on council? Mr. Frymark?
I am very concerned about not funding chamber's, uh, window into Woodland through the visitor's center. Uh, I've seen two visitor's centers closed in my life, and I know what happened to those towns, within the next year or two, uh, businesses left. Many, many organizations had a lower opinion of that particular city. I'd hate to see that happen here again. I think we really need to fund them at a level they continue to operate. If they can't operate at the twenty-five thousand dollar figure, then we need to consider either upping our budget or giving them the minimum amount of money they think thrown on that. I'd be very disappointed if our window from the outside, folks outside of town, is not big and beautiful, so they can look into it and see the chamber's operation and the viability of the center, of the city in general on it. Uh, I would vote to reverse the amounts and go back to the original, uh, forty-five thousand.
This is.
I, I think you might be right thirty years ago, it's twenty-twenty-six, and most people don't even know what the visitor's center is, or with the internet, I don't think that's the main source of people coming through the city. I just think it's, I think it's so outdated and so outdated reality, I, I think, we might spend it a lot better ways than that old building on the, on the, on the.
To, to add to Gabe's point, we just had a citizen come up here and say that they lived here a year and did not know what that building even was. Um, and then, when they went in it, it, you know, left a, a very odd feeling. And I hear Mr. Frymark's point about the Chamber of Commerce being important, I agree, the Chamber of Commerce is important, but the visitor's center, from the chamber director's own words, is not the same as the chamber. So, the chamber and visitor, visitor's center are two separate things, both can operate separately. And I don't think we're losing a visitor's center, we potentially have engagement from DWR to pick up a welcome center to carry that forward with the original intention of the building.
Ms. Rounds?
You were talking about living here a year and something and not going in there. People that live here don't normally go in there that much unless it's the legislative phone call or whatever that we're holding there. It's the people that come in from downtown or from other states that wanna go to the visitor's center, and they find out where it's at, and they go there, and they find out what to do. That's my thing.
Fair point.
So, different perspectives, so I talked to one of our local ho- hotel owners here in our community. Eighty to eighty-five percent of their, um, uh, usage is by people coming through the town, they only have about fifteen percent of their hotel is through reservations. They have checked with that visitor's center, and the visitor's center does not recommend or use them. So, I struggle, again, if we're using that, everyone should be, it doesn't matter if this hotel here, hotel here, we've got five motels, here are your choices, whoop, not, here's where I would go. So, again, just a little bit of more color to the conversation.
Motion to end discussion?
Second.
Okay. As we stand now, I have a action item D to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Woodland Chamber of Woodland's visitor's center to receive twenty-five thousand dollars.
I make a motion to approve action item D, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Woodland Chamber of Commerce for the twenty-five thousand.
So, the original motion was to discuss, we have to vote on that first, and then you can make a new motion if you would like.
Okay, we already, okay.
We have to mo- we have to vote on ending discussion?
Well, the motion was made to discuss authorization, it didn't say to authorize the mayor to sign.
Got it, so, and we had discussion, so, we had two, a first and a second, so, Ms. Hogan, for the discussion.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
No.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston? Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Okay, so we had our discussion, is there any more discussion, council approved to have a discussion? Okay, now, we are back to action item D, and I believe Mr. Friend made a motion to approve.
Yes.
So, I have a first. Do I have a second to authorize twenty-five thousand dollars be paid to DWR?
This is.
I mean, I'm sorry, to chamber, my bad. Whiplash. I do not have a second. I have a second from Mr. Houston. So, I have a first and a second to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Woodland Chamber for the Woodland Visitor Center to receive twenty-five thousand dollars from lodging tax. I have a first from Mr. Friend and a second from Mr. Houston. Any conversation or discussion regarding this authorization?
So, we're voting?
We're voting on action item D, Ms. Hogan. This is to authorize twenty-five thousand dollars to Woodland, um, visitor's center. This is to authorize twenty-five thousand dollars to Woodland, um, Visitor Center through the chamber. Ms. Hogan.
Councilmember Frymark.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
No.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Friend.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds.
No.
Councilmember Doughty.
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, that, action item has failed, there will not be a payment to, uh, Woodland Visitor Center. Moving into action item C, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Downtown Woodland Revitalization, DWR, to receive twenty-five thousand dollars from lodging tax fund.
Motion to approve action item C, but to move the amount to fifty thousand dollars.
What did you say?
Action ma- item C for DWR.
Right, did you say fifty thousand?
But for fifty thousand dollars.
You can't change it, the agenda is for twenty-five thousand.
Oh, okay, so I approve the twenty-five thousand.
So you have a motion to approve action item C?
Yes.
Second.
I have a second and a first, so a first from Ms. Doughty and a second from Mr. Friend. Any conversation from the community online or at council regarding the twenty-five thousand dollar payment to DWR?
I do have a question, so since motion or item D did not pass the motion, that leaves twenty-five thousand of LTAC funds in limbo now that aren't assigned to anything. I mean, are, is, it, does it just sit, and then we would vote later?
We already, already.
Well, we, we didn't talk about that though, we talked. Well, the question was though if we approved it and then the chamber didn't accept it.
Erin, are you online, so I've asked you to unmute my friend?
I am.
So Erin is our attorney, she is with, um, Emily, so Erin, the conversation, the question is, so the twenty-five thousand dollar payment to, um, the visitor center was, uh, denied. So we have in the budget, we've authorized fifty thousand dollars in total, the budget first and sec- or the second and final reading was just done, so we have fifty thousand total, so.
Okay, correct.
Okay, now the agenda item says twenty-five thousand dollars for DWR.
Yes.
Okay, so I understand council would have to deny this here, but what happens? What, can they change this to fifty thousand dollars, what are the steps, what can they do, not do? Correct me if I'm wrong.
All of that.
That's my question, yes.
All of LTAC funds don't have to be awarded this year, so if the council decides to make a partial award, then it will have LTAC funds left that it can consider other applications for at some future date. If the council wants to give all of the fifty thousand, basically change the allotment, I think that would have to go back to, I think that would have to go to the LTAC, back to the LTAC committee if they're changing the numbers.
So, so if I hear you correctly, we've authorized fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars if they approve twenty-five thousand dollars here, they still have twenty-five thousand dollars at our new council some point in twenty twenty-six could make an action item and authorize twenty-five thousand dollars be given somewhere else because that is available funds in our budget.
Correct, or it, and it wouldn't have necessarily have to do the twenty-five thousand to one entity depending on, you know, the list of na- who applies for it and the list of names that the LTAC committee provides you.
Right, so if, you know, the Lilac Gardens or Joe's, you know, five oh one C three came forward, if it met the requirements, they could come to the city and this council could authorize something, is what I'm hearing here.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions here for you Erin, I think Mr. Houston was first.
My question was just if we would have approved, uh, action item D, um, giving the money to the chamber and then they would have denied it, could we then have gave those funds to someone else without having to go back to LTAC?
I did not hear all of Mr. Houston's question, but I, what I think he's asking is if the action item gets denied, can they, can you guys award the funds to someone else?
No, Erin, 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 the question was if he would have, if the council would have approved twenty-five thousand dollars to DWR to visitor center, in January, the visitor center comes forward and says, we don't want those funds, but they've been awarded to them, how would we reallocate those twenty-five thousand dollars later on in twenty twenty-six? Right now, I understand, we just need to make a, uh, an agenda item, an action item, and council will need to approve it. But if it was funded the other way, how would that have done?
So if the motion had passed to fund visitor center and they declined the awards, then the city still has that money to start, basically start the award process again with getting a list of names from the LTAC committee from the applicants and making an award from it.
Got it, and so there's no difference if they deny it, because again, the budget, we, budget, we base on funds and our fund account shows that we had fifty thousand dollars in total between these two.
Yes.
Appreciate that Erin, hold on one second, we have Ms. Doughty who has a question.
So Erin, if L- if DWR has requested fifty thousand and we award them twenty-five thousand today, can they put in an application for the next twenty-five thousand? Or do we need to decline today and send it back to LTAC for the fifty thousand approval?
I, I think the question Erin is, if we award funds to a entity, does that take them out of the opportunity to get additional funds later on in twenty twenty-six?
No, I don't believe so, they can reapply for additional funds assuming they still meet all the criteria and qualifications.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
No problem.
So I have a first and a second for twenty-five thousand dollars to, uh, DWR. Do I have any conversation, questions, comments from the community or conversation from council before we take a vote? Yep, Mr. Frymark.
Just as a general observation, uh, since the chamber said that, uh, they can't accept anything less than forty thousand dollars. Uh, personally, I'd like to revisit this entire process. And given their request on it, I don't think that, uh, giving the first twenty-five thousand dollars to the DWR is going to solve long-term order, so should I? Because I'm firmly with your visitor centers or what they could do to the city, but, uh, just think about it.
To repeat that, I, for people online, he's saying we should revisit the process, he, um, I forget the exact word, would like to see forty thousand dollars go to, um, the visitor center to keep them going and revisit this process.
Um, we've already voted on that forty-ten and we sent it back to LTAC and with our approval of twenty-five twenty-five because we did not agree on the forty-ten, so I don't think that that is necessary at this time because we did not want to see that happen.
I'd also like to point out from Ms. Hogan earlier, both groups requested fifty thousand, which I think the fair and just thing to do is to split it. So I, because you, you mentioned we have, we should give chamber the full amount requested. I, I need an argument to understand why DWR is also not justified in receiving the full amount they requested. They both have similar intentions.
Yeah, Ms. Frymark.
The, the question is, is what's your priority? Uh, visitor center and its, uh, appeal to the public or DWR, I really respect DWR, they're doing a good thing, but I also think there's no substitute for a good visitor center. That's my opinion.
I have a comment from, um, Brittany, come on up. Come on to the podium. Loud and proud.
I was just gonna make a remark, I think the priority has been made, I think the community has been very, very outspoken about DWR. The visitor center is not putting on major events, so, um, that's really all I had to say, I think that's it.
Come on up, Max.
Just a quick follow-up comment, um, if the visitor center, since there's twenty-five thousand available, if the visitor center wanted to reapply after the New Year's based on what I'm hearing from Erin, they would be able to.
Correct, so since they are getting zero as the way it stands now, if they change their money, can live with twenty-five thousand dollars, they can approach the city and say, hey, listen, we would like twenty-five thousand dollars.
Correct, so there's still twenty-five thousand up grabs after the New Year, and frankly, the visitor center kind of did an ultimatum, right, so to be fair, that, I don't think that's a fair thing to do, um, from what I've, you know, been listening, and they still have the opportunity to get to twenty-five thousand where it's not completely, everything's over for them, so I just wanted to point that out. And frankly, I, I do like the way this has been going so far, so, thank you.
I appreciate you coming to the podium seeking, Mr. Uh.
I was just gonna men- mention that, uh, in the letter that we got. Okay, I was just gonna mention in the, in the letter we received, they said if they, they did not get to twenty-five, uh, to forty thousand, they were gonna decline it.
Correct, but that was why I asked, um, Mr. Butler, again, I wanted to be clear, I don't wanna hearsay, things have run the paper, will this person talk to this person, again, we need to run the city based on what is in our agenda, based what is here, and, you know, the dialogue here at the podium, and so yes, that was the reason I asked him that question. Any other comments, questions from council or the community before we take a vote on action item C? Ms. Hogan.
Councilmember Rounds.
No.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
No.
Councilmember Frymark.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Friend.
Aye.
With a vote of four to three, the action has passed to fund DWR with twenty-five thousand dollars from lodging tax. Again, to repeat here, we have fifty thousand dollars between the two, in total, there's sixty-five thousand, others have already been pledged, so we do have twenty-five thousand dollars of a funding available through twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion to end.
Before you make a motion in the meeting, that's what I wanna say. Uh, last week during the meeting, uh, Jason made a motion to excuse my absence. Not one person even a second of it, so I sent an email out and it said, I'm deeply disappointed by what occurred through recent city council meetings, when a motion was made by Councilmember Friend to excuse my absence, obviously, councilmembers stepped forward and accepted the motion. The silence is more than procedural issue and reflects the fact of political legality and mutual respect among the elected officials who are entrusted to represent our community, regardless of personal difference or political disagreements. Every councilmember deserves fair and consistent treatment under the same rules and standards. Failure to even second the motion simply to allow discussion undermines the professionalism and integrity that our residents expect from our local government. Our community deserves better and our council should be committed to upholding the dignity of the office and fairness of the process. I got zero response, replies to the email that I sent out, and.
So, I will let council speak, again, when you discuss something that is related to a council meeting, we have open forum requirements, they are not by law allowed to sit there and engage with why an action item or why a motion was approved or not when there's seven of them. So the other six councilmembers, I appreciate you not responding to that because again, open, public, you know, information, we cannot have that dialogue back and forth. If Gabe wants to have it one-on-one with you, feel free, but again, when you have a quorum of seven people on that email.
Oh, I have another email I sent, you didn't respond, what, what is that?
So, do you wanna read that email, Gabe? I would be happy for you to read that email. Do you want me to pull it up? I would be happy to read it.
Oh, he's got it.
I said, I wanna express some concern that's weighed on me for some time, on multiple occasions when we have crossed paths in public, we have learned not to acknowledge my presence as a councilman or an organist colleague. The lack of recognition and basic courtesy is very noticeable and disappointing. We can always agree on every issue, we have the right to service and sustain community and our position, our baseline of professionalism and respect. Simple acknowledgement of greeting is not about politics, it's about maintaining the dignity of our office and setting an example for the residents who expect us to work together in good faith. I'm committed to treating non-city officials with respect regardless of differences, and I believe our community deserves better leaders who uphold those standards. I hope we can move forward with a renewed focus on professionalism, mutual respect, and shared responsibility we both carry.
I respect the process up here, the dialogue, the conversation, out in the community, respect is earned, and somebody who told us last April that they were going to get within six months back inside the city limits and would be part of that, when they got a job.
I've done everything to.
You're still not inside the city limit, you do not, let me speak.
Then why does the attorney send out?
Gabe, let me speak, I let you read.
I'm not intimidating anybody else up here, but I am not intimidated by you, I'm not gonna let you just talk over me and, and treat me like that, so, no, I don't wanna hear what you have to say. I've done everything I have to, to abide by all the rules, being a public residency, the attorney's sending out papers, the landlord, there's nothing more that I, you have to say about it, just, if there was, I would be sitting here right now. That's all I have to say about that.
This is why I do not show you respect, in the sense I do not say hi to you or those things because again.
You can't take me off when it's just killing you that, that you're not, you're not man.
This is the exact example, I'm trying to have a dialogue and conversation with you and you're over talking me.
How's it feel?
Anything else you would like to say?
I have one thing I wanna say.
Ms. Rounds.
As far as respect for the office, wearing your hat turned around at a meeting is not very respectful to the office that you're, uh, setting on. So that's all I have to say too.
I have a motion for Mr. Houston to end the meeting. And I have a second. The time is now eight oh six, the meeting is adjourned, have a great night, Eva.